Now two o'clock. All we need to do is plan and go to the board.
Yeah, we can do that. Come on, please.
Pleasure to Texas flag.
I'm not a Texas flag. She doesn't see Texas. One second. Uh, your person in office. Vice President John.
Here.
Uh, Commissioner Paul.
For good.
Measure that important. Uh, alternate Commissioner from here.
Here.
Alternate Commissioner Bledsoe.
Two and four. And, uh... We've been having a whole conversation about this.
So what's that?
And would I like to do that a moment if I could, um... Go into some conversation now and probably go along with you there. Okay, um... If you want to remember here, um, we did a meeting, um, I was ready to have a lot of...
It's this number eleven. Turn it all the way down. So I just... Right up here. It's all the way down. It's all the way down to just right here.
Oh, yeah, great. And we had a number of memories to serve, so we really appreciate that. Um, people keeping updated on some of the conversations we've been having on past several meetings. So it has sort of a little column that will open it. And what's happened to that topic since we've had that meeting. Everybody else they have what what's happened with that conversation. Um, and our last P and T meeting, we had what I thought was a major thoughtful discussion. I don't remember where we succeeded. We're raising off nice questions and issues. And, um, mostly questions about something that could be a difficult kind of topic within the hand. It's a very complex topic, but a good one. And so what I did was to put together, uh, you know, if you guys have all taken notes, comments, concerns, and questions, put together a list. And, uh, I was asked to, uh, address City Council by Mayor Rascal, which, uh, took place on February twenty-third. And according to City Council, this is fourteen items that came up in our discussion. These aren't the answers. What happened when we had good discussion, I think we had good questions on that. That's what we get. And so, uh, in talking with Mayor Rascal, our presentation, um, it ended up, uh, with the meeting yesterday. And, uh, Mayor Rascal should have been drafted a paparazzi presentation. He's putting together for a very important meeting coming up. It's been a town hall meeting since March twenty-seventh. And, uh, yeah, town hall meeting. Encouraged everybody to come to that. And please encourage everybody to come to that. It's going to be a really important source of input from the citizenry about these various issues that come up because of this discussion. And, uh, what Mayor Rascal did in his presentation draft was to, in fact, uh, highlight, uh, points from our list into race seven during the, uh, town hall for discussion of justice, citizens, to get all the kind of information flowing. Personally, we think that that's something to do. I'm glad you're doing it. Uh, we're always interested in getting as much citizen input to these topics we can. And, uh, that's going to be one of our first steps to doing that, discussing the issue. And so again, encourage everyone to come to that town hall. And, uh, if you're interested in raising things that we see also to City Council. So it's doing a town hall. So, um, okay, and, um... One of the, I think, major functions that we're working towards on the P and T meeting is something that is part of our charge from the mayor of the City Council. It's to serve as an advisory board. This is before they mentioned the survey meeting. And I think the notion that we need to come up with questions as well to answer is to involve priority. And so I think this type of communication can... relationship between the security force with that reason. Um, and again, I'm also hoping that we will help all of the candidates of ways to communicate with the citizenry. The town hall break, other meetings break, uh, we do kind of missions to survey with the citizenry. Lots of different ways to find out what's going on with the community. And I think almost the constant process of communication to citizens is important. The worst thing to do is let the data bog does know or come around. Let's figure out what's especially good for the city. We can do that. We talk to the city. Okay, um, other function or other item? And I forget the meeting where this took place and I discussed this with the city manager. We've got a new time for this P and T meeting, so will the meeting at five o'clock now? No? Who am I talking to?
We, we had it because of the transition to what we're using. We're trying.
Okay.
But we won't always be in time.
Okay.
But the act was that it's the best time to be. That was the best recommendation.
Okay, okay. Jump ahead on that recommendation. I hope it does. Anyhow, so you took your email for updates on that. Sure. Okay, um... Let's... Now we'll move into...
Uh, your person, can I make one statement? Under the zoning code where there are, uh, for planning and zoning, say, city management shall appoint an alternate to fill the position of a missing member. And since we're missing two members, both of our alternates shall have the right to vote.
Great. Thanks. Okay, uh, we're into our consent agenda. Improvement Plan in Zoning Commission meeting minutes from November next. And... What, um... Have you got the motion to approve the meeting something over there?
I'm good. There are thirty minutes from November the ninth.
Is your second?
My second.
Thank, thank you. Okay, um, checking to see what, um... Ooh, you're... It was the rule point I thought it was the first that was due to the regulation. Okay, during the discussion of this? Oh, please.
Uh... Commissioner Paul.
Well, I wasn't out with the mission. I can't, I'm supposed to be in the meeting.
But you still, you still owe them a bit. Uh... Vice President John.
Yeah.
Your person, Kamala.
Hi.
Uh, alternate Commissioner Bledsoe.
Yes.
And alternate Commissioner from here.
Hi.
Motion passed.
And the next item is the Improvement Plan in Zoning Commission meeting minutes in February sixteenth. Is the motion approved? And I should prefer to give, is there a second?
Sure.
Is there a discussion? Um... Do you have anything to do with the... Oh, well...
Okay, your person, Kamala.
Here.
Okay. Uh...
Hi.
Uh, alternate Commissioner Bledsoe.
Yes.
Uh, alternate Commissioner from here.
Hi.
And Commissioner Paul. Motion passed.
On that part, we're in the agenda. There's three items on the working agenda. I'd like to read my question if I can.
That's wrong.
Uh, I would like to start with the discussion of, um, number, uh... Maybe go to... Um... To be... The, uh... Okay, this is a general, um, review of agenda. And this is, uh, related to... Number one, five, six, zero, six, six, because last night, and ultimately, uh... Only is to allow, um, owners who own, how we do property, greenhouses, property, store, and will do, uh, certain high structures, things across the law. Both, both lots. And in looking at the written proposal, suggesting the title, I would say it could be, um, covered parts of both lots. Greenhouses, sheds, plenty of water. Old house. Said, and, uh... Is, um, is it a motion? So you have a chance to do this?
All right. Good. It's settled.
You need a motion to...
Yes, we need a motion before you settle.
I'm going to agree, um, for the second one. Approved, though, on final approval.
It's your second?
My second.
Thank you. Okay, we're discussing now. Um... I'm going to give you one second. Come on.
Sure. I've got a, uh, I've got a, uh, I've got a few thoughts about this, uh, of the village. I, it says, uh, we're very thoughtful. And in other competition, it, uh, today, it's, uh, it's said, purpose is on the back. So I'm going to go ahead and park it here. It's, that's the system. So we have the number four, standard and previous character information applied to the paparazzi, primaries, starting to chip on.
You're not, you're not using this microphone, please?
Yes. It's not before, uh, a standard and previous character information applied to the law, law, which, which, where the primary certainly exists. And you have two lots. And you want to build across those lots, uh, with lots. And I think why the two lots would be difficult because one entity with a twenty percent from the character. And I think why... We might, you know, and a big, a proper line had this, so that the building is separate. Probably two, two lots and therefore would be anyway, perhaps, one lot. Not counted as part of two lots. I think that needs to be more tested. And also in number five, the center, remarkably, in, in, uh, two, two percent of the law from the character, fifteen percent. That's what needs also in mind. The two lots are compliant, she's thirty-seven, not two lots. Thank you. Okay. Uh, look, I'm, I'm, I'm processing this. So basically, the... If the, the laws are compromised. And I think that's one thing that, uh, my county cannot allow anything to be built from property, across property lines or on a transportation block without a primary structure. And, uh, just a little bit of history of this is because even if you want, and then three properties, you can't. Because you only have a primary property, uh, primary structure of one. And so, and that's why we have, and that's one of the things that's hard this whole thing was because people do want to build fences across and encompass their whole property. Uh, but I, and, uh, sectioned not draft this ordinance for this recommendation. It came through council. And so I might have pretty big of a thought process on it. But when you get upon this stuff, that if you're going to put a structure as a storage building on a secondary block, it's not a primary structure, you're still up to twenty of those two lots. You're just, uh, if this ordinance passes, it will allow them to put storage building on that other one. Yeah, I think the thought process there is good enough, though. The storage building is easily removed if they decide to sell it.
Uh, I have a question. If we allow them to put this many people on one desk, uh, it's easy...
But that's a permanent structure.
Yeah.
So, and it's not supposed to mean anything as permanent. That's why I talked about the full act.
Okay.
But it doesn't talk about any pool.
Well, here's my other question. Um, oh, sorry. Uh, the building setback for apartments, uh, will apply only to the eyebrows of the adjacent property that is on the line of the lot. So does that mean that the primary structure could then sit on the lot?
No.
I mean, I have a, that's a little maybe.
Well, it's more than a thing, I mean, where I read it, it aims to say that I'm very wrong. Say, I can't do the door. Uh... It should only apply to the most innocent days of ours. Women and the figure. I think that maybe the answer is that it would be required to combine the two or three lots at once. So that in the future, against all part of the two or three lots, it's still going to be that dependent across the... It's close to it.
That's being current aid portion. Is that if you do, if you do not have a primary structure on one lot, you cannot do anything on your adjacent lots.
So why change it?
This is not, this is not my recommendation. This, this was presented in front of the planning and zoning for the city council.
Okay. I have a question. Why would this come about? We have someone...
Okay, we, we have certain individuals, especially on this, that would like to build across property.
I understand.
I, I understand that. Uh, we had one situation, a person owned four lots. And when the house was built, it was before Wood Creek was even in the city, but the house actually straddled three lots. And then they wanted to add a penny. Well, within the last, because they exceeded this third discovery, uh, because of the primary structure. But they did join their three lots so that they could add them. And then they left one lot not joined. Uh, we had, we had, uh, or individual that's asked for a variance before the Board of Adjustments because their house carries two lots. And the Board of Adjustments allowed the fence to be built across the lots, lines. Uh, but that, so, uh, basically, uh, and when we split plans, our ATOs, our engineers on other things, they said, well, you don't have the primary structure. So I have to allow them to build something on a given plot. And so basically, you know, I'm just going to say that making it a little bit similar for our citizens to enjoy their property for certain items. That's why it was presented, uh, like a greenhouse or something like that. But when you get into a permanent structure, which I can't, you know, a garage should not be allowed because that's, that's permanent structure. But listen. You'd have, must have followed where you're getting at.
Yeah, but in the next opportunity, you combine the two lots or three lots. They can be anywhere.
That's right. Yes.
Then somehow that's food justification. We're just changing that. I'm hoping they don't change it. We can leave even more than you. I understand this is a recent point, and we have a meeting that goes in, and each lot had a primary structure of minimum eight square foot issue, second, second. And I can see the reason why we should. If I had a next for later, I'd end up with a table, table, structure, back, and the pocket, nine, nine people, probably, seven, eight.
Right on. Yes. I can mention, um, um, or answer, one minute.
Mission.
Um... Like a big spot. That's one of the little couples we get. A lot of the thinking behind it was that, um, to combine those lots, it actually gets to be quite expensive to have to survey after counting of their LPs in order to get those lots combined into one. Um, and then if you didn't want to sell that other lot where you put the, the garden or the, or the, the vents, and you didn't want to sell out of the lot, then you have to undo that in order to be able to break that lot off and do it. So that was something in mind. The main, I mean, the, the, sort of the thinking was that if you were pouring country, you know, you probably haven't been doing it across a lot. Um, if it's a fence, it's hardscaped and like a path, um, you know, gardens, nothing like that, that, that's what was trying to help. Um, and then to be able to, especially the fences, fences that are, um, and we've got, we've got citizens actually in the room right now, including myself, um, who have dealt with that, but don't necessarily want to the county and replat the land. We're, we're going to do it. We got, like, it's up for the, I'm sorry? It didn't, like, oh, on, okay. One fifty-four, just drive, uh, and there.
So, Eric, do you have a estimate of the cost if you have to do that, do it the right way?
Was survey, it's probably a couple of thousand dollars. Um, the replating fees, um, in the county, um, probably about that much or more. I'm not, I'm not really sure, uh, Commissioner. Uh, honestly, that's about four hundred dollars. The man flat, uh, the tank piece, probably around six hundred.
So we're going to be... I'm bad at math.
If I...
I'll go with that thousand dollars. Please, sir, will you come to the right of the problem, please? Look, you're just giving... It's like state house law, but they... Three.
That's good.
State house law, and, uh, I'm ordered this, this is why I ordered this. And the house will need to plow this, or it comes to theirs. And they put me down that thousand dollars. They put me in a position to see. So, I'm like, the general. Uh, I'm going to try to find a code, essentially, can't figure this out. I think I'm not. So, uh... I'll do all this. I mean, I thought ten thousand dollars currently would solve all of that, that extended out, like, beating one of the blocks of the district. That's... You say, then, you can't, you want to do your, you plan to build... A small dog fence? Dog, yes, you don't fence, unless, unless you... There's about, I don't know. It swings out about coming to the other side of my house. Because where this is law. But you know, then, you need to work around, work around foundation. This guy, Mark, can't tell you anything, like, but we're... Joe, if we hold him up against the law, on the fence, you give the cross parking lot, I have a partner. I have partners with the infrastructure, greenhouses, sheds, playground, two thousand parkers, your horse. I said, probably those were, were fence. I don't have a partner. That's something you would do while I'm taking the barriers, to set the whole situation to the actual court. And I'm pretty, pretty, very... A person for certification wants the law combined and cannot be reseparated.
No, they could be reseparated, but you would have to go through the, uh, process again to divide them back.
It would seem to be important to your occasion, I heard, with, with some of the times he has, if there's anything that's permanent, kind of, this is, uh, if you want to put a foundation under sheds, uh, or, uh, that would be, which is success of this, uh, spirit of, of, um... And I can get the sense of whatever, what you refer to as, as permanent is what it's something I'm... No, I, I, then, and most of it, except, that's certainly okay in my opinion. But it's very difficult. Okay, other, other discussion?
Um... I guess I'm kind of like the most, I mean, this is, that's not a big, but when we talk about the carpors, the garages, those kind of take it to me, a structure that's something better be there and not easily taken down.
Well, carp, as, as I said, it must be a great, but it can't, just, uh, carp, and that's, remember, when I was building a garage, it was a permanent structure. So this is much more for if I'm having a garden, you know, keep my tomato plants alive in winter, I can put them in the greenhouse, for example. And I don't see you on the city as a vested interest in main driven in my neighbors. You may lie about them.
Well, but a greenhouse, you can take that very easily.
Yeah, it's true, yeah.
I guess what they've stuck on is what's permanent and what's not.
Well, for one, carporthorn does not allow any health in the city. So we could, we could track that. Well, I think it's a bit, a bit of a, I think we're looking for a sort of consistent deal of structures in this city. We're talking about, you know, it's going to be twenty foot from here, ten foot from there. It used to be like thirty-five, the nation where it was required, and we want to go in with the cell of course. We're looking at a consistent route here. And we're saying about, why do you have a lot on the side of the, you can't really do with anyone there, so it's, uh, pardon me. I think that stretch is too far, honestly. But you don't look at it too far. You can do with everyone else. Additional, added ten thousand dollars. Adding an additional ten thousand dollars to the, in order just to put up a greenhouse or something like that. You know, and that becomes very costly and heavy. And my opinion, the role of our government, she is to facilitate the freedom of our citizens. That's what it's, what it's about to check in arms and ways, so that they're likely to be able to property. Well, the other side of that, that distinction is that, you know, we look, we have a great deal of a neighbor of the south, which has a advantage, and she can give you property rights, and, uh, it's a balance between more of a neighbor's thing and what he is part of the, of the, the right now. We had a difference, so a greater deal of communities will decide what can be built and developed, and not where it would be recommended to change them. So how is it that a greenhouse is a greater... Well, you know, as a neighbor's, you go for variance, and then, uh, city mayor, you won't ask for the neighbors, and the two hundred feet that it enters, that would be part of the city, right? Is, is that, would that be appropriate to treat these kinds of particularly, with government's process?
Uh, yes, the person could apply for a variance. There's no guarantee it would be applied, because there are certain buttons that can be met for the Board of Justice, and be, allow variance.
Trying to think of what other multi-values, and what could be applied to someone, and who is not from the, so, appearance, aesthetics, um, you know, away from the street and, but I'm saying so then, you're right to put up structures, I can be, how you do it, we're ready to fit.
I mean, as long as, this is just my thought, as long as it might have been, it's, uh, the hot, as long as it might have been, and it's not, you know, causing a kind of, or something like that, um, I wouldn't have a problem with that.
And if your dogs are barking, you have one of the, the city laws, I'm stating, is supposed to shut them down, dog, so. Well, I also caution against, you know, uh, putting more in the, you know, what is high score? But the baby seat tree factor, greenhouse, you know, versus, whatever, maybe you don't like the looks of there. So I'm just saying, I have to do some various objectives, which, you know, really should not be followed, what we have in areas, just for, okay? If I want, purple, that's my neighbor, that does like purple, you know, this, government should step in and just allow me, thank you, my, my, color. Is, you know, somebody's, you know, like that company? Here's another example, let's say I have a ten percent, it'd be a fifteen percent in purpose, fifteen hundred square foot, so I'm going out with a, shed, or all of mine, stop. No parking, door, that's, you know, private, whatever, like, we need a bed, there, it's a bed and shed, in residential, will you guys, yeah, true? Of course, if you don't, that's where we have, the word we have. And then I, you know, put in my truck, whatever, my boat, and, 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 and it looks nice, if you're going to do it. Again, I have time to investigate, if the fence is what we want, I don't care. Do we, do we have any origins in the city, of the management's, big plans, per se?
Uh, we do, we do have business orders about how we, uh, based on that issue, and we know about, other, if we would all, I can't, or.
Would that be relevant to his case? It would violate the, of those, or.
As long as, as long as, well, a lot of things happen, it's true. You could think, uh, look, instead of saying fifteen, or fifteen percent could be the size of the building itself, that could come in, sit, skits, or, and pick it up and carry it off, that'd be not permanent, but if you, like, uh, follow this policy that you put in a fifteen hundred square foot storage shed, that's, I, I, that's.
Okay.
But there was no, but there, you say there's no permanent values.
Okay. Now, can I, can I get a clarification?
So, the, the next one is this began, and it's having something that, right, so, a fence that crosses over a lot line, a, a path that goes over a lot line, um, you know, you could build a greenhouse on the lot, but if you have a hole of the lot over there, you could also move it off, you could, there's nothing to stop, you're not, for putting a greenhouse on the lot that you own next door.
Yes, sir. Because it's an accessory building to a primary structure, and you can't have primary, you can't have an accessory building without a primary structure on the same lot.
Okay, so you could do a greenhouse or a shed, not, not on the other property, okay? Okay, so, so there might be an advantage to being able to do that, I know, if, I mean, I've got two lots, um, to pop our variance is a few hundred bucks, um, and it might go through. If I don't put a fence across that lot line, I can't even, I mean, the, at this point, if I apply for variance, I'd probably get shot down across the lot, and that's what we're trying to get at, is building a, to, non-permanent structure, like a fence, or a path, across a lot, um, what about, like? Or place it?
Place it.
Yeah, place it.
Yeah, place it, but we, we have to, places, yeah, for, for, yeah. So.
As long as personal interest is required. Yeah, so I've been placed that on our big lot, and for the kids, so, um, but that would come under this at all, so, um, it is, it is building, this is, you know, top room, you know, what should not be, how many, there's things that should not be allowed, but the whole point is getting out of the variance process, or the replating process, in order to do something as simple as putting a fence across lot lines, and the contiguous properties that, that this, that an individual owner, the, the.
So, I think one thing we need to be clear is that, just, all of the, like, some of the shares, you can, you can, they, like, per se, but, so. Well, as far as the fence, I'm in favor of allowing fences first, probably, okay, best, favorite?
What we just got, the number two, the line number two. With that, I think fences, sidewalks, was that third?
Okay, that's, well, I don't.
I, I think, the thing is, I, I'm stuck on, maybe, this one, you know, public expression, um, I think it's, we did, sorry, the two, and there's something that we talked, that says that four, that is not by the necessary, right, to be very cautious, if you can't officially, other to, and it's, so they decide, will be required, follow the, the process. But in other words, they have to, have to, you know, talk to you about this, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, but we wanted to, we needed to, to, to see this, that, one clear situation is, I think, that I, that's, that's possible, saying here, first, for, for fences, sidewalk, civil, and, and, and. So I'm, but, that would be, that would be. Well, you're not, you're, 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 which, and, and, which, you, you pull, which, well, of course, you're, that, which, you, one, the, the, so, to, to finish. So, well, here is, fences seem to be okay, not, well, they could be problematic, but we are willing to let these other, other possibilities be decided, as soon as it's a variance. So then we can take this, the whole, or, 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 the fences, or, is that what we need about? We're doing, right, we're, one, that's more, that's, 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 it's, it's secret, but they do ours, and then, so, it's more, more of a rest of fences, delivery number one. We're talking about, it's, 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 it's. Okay, so I'm asking you, we propose, can we, can we edit this in one passing, or?
I, I can. We move back the. Okay, we have a motion, that's, that's, like, we're in discussion, so it would be a friendly, it'd be a.
Well, if that's, 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 number two, he was, he could, he could also give, he made it down.
Right.
Who's second? Who's second?
And I'm excited to turn to you.
Is there, we can, can you better describe, or, number two, the non-permanent nature that we're looking for? Um, you know, now, say, let's run the fifteen hundred square foot, big metal barn, which would obviously have to be permanent structure. You know, I mean, I, I, I'm going to see, with a full house, obviously, that is, um, would that be, if, if, disapprove for other reasons, or, in order to, fifteen hundred?
Basically, they would bid on, uh, above this ten thousand square foot. Well, is that, that, because that is the same size as a regular residential one, S F one, whole.
Without that, what, you can handle that, you would handle that?
Well, it could, if, if that, if it was allowed, it could be just fifteen percent of that purpose covered.
Okay, could we go down to the, 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 the?
Sure, exactly. All right, uh, Mayor Sharapova?
Yes.
Uh, Master Person Jones?
I'm clarifying, we're discussing on the amendment?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Uh, Chairman DeCarver?
Yes.
Uh, Alterment Commissioner Sunear?
To clarify, this is for training, number two, from, uh.
Yes.
Uh, I, I guess.
And Alterment Commissioner Carson Wutzel?
Yes.
Motion, that's.
President, yes, okay, uh, back to the initial motion. I call the question, I'm in, we see more, so the motion would include the amendment?
Yes.
Yes, call the question, I'm in.
Uh, Chairman DeCarver?
Yes.
Uh, Alterment Commissioner Sunear?
Uh, there's no, no, I, I, no.
Uh. Commissioner Paul?
Yes.
And Alterment Commissioner Wutzel?
Yes.
And Master Person Jones?
Yes, with preparation.
I get my, this is. Motion, that's.
Okay, um, next item we'd like to discuss is the, um, is the, or, is it? One part. Number three, five.
The, uh, break.
Number three. Study can be, towards the, uh, informations, we're going to see towns regarding parking in quarter, they're stated in, 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 six, building sections, uh, one five six two, the, the, the driveways, one five eight two, the nine parking, one five six zero, the eight parking, low requirements, one five six zero five six, carports and garages, one five six zero five nine parking, and one five six zero six three, uh, two persons is already required. Okay, um, what would be the probable material?
Can I point out one thing, uh, Chairman, just, uh, can I just point out one thing? On the, on the handout, the schedule for city parking, uh, is not, was not put on the, so it goes, one five six point two two eight, which is on page ten, that's worth, that's worth, uh, planning as a, as a schedule, okay?
Okay, we don't, is that the schedule for city parking?
No, uh, I'm being, I'm being, it's, it's, about, to begin.
Okay, okay. Our discussion will begin, where?
It would just, again, on hard surface driveways, one fifty-six, oh, oh, two, two eight, it's at the bottom of page ten.
Okay. What is to do then, if there's a bunch of questions, the comments, the top part, uh, what way goes with the law?
You guys, we have, it's, it's, like, 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 on.
Okay, hard surface drivers, right? Again, going over this, I just see so many things, there's, you've done, I guess, that's the, the vein of putting together all the time, city orders, is kind of, of, this is , you see it out, and, 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 oh, pictures, you're, you're, and, uh, I, my, so, again, so, that, uh, clearly, that, city, that, in terms of definitions, um, there's terminology, there's, like, waterway, there's, uh, uh, utility, there's, utility, yeah.
Oh, utilities.
We've got, we've got, and, we want to, you, you, define those terms, and then these things, and, so, I'm not quite sure, why do you get space in front of my house, or be my, or, the street?
Uh, uh, for your house, most houses in the city, uh, there is a city right, um, and we have a fifty-foot right of way for the, and so, the road, right, it builds, the freeway, right, it builds easement, then, it's three foot wide, three, yeah, here, then we have, uh, another portion, we have the, down inside to the lot, there is a public utility, and so, this is only interesting, what is actually called city right, basically your billboards.
So I'm, this is the existing city code, right, this, this, right?
This is, this is.
So what is our task here today, is to revise?
Uh, yeah, I'm just gonna mean, let y'all make sure it's the environment.
Let me, let me do that, we're reviewing this, you know, we want to limit this, actually, proper, actions for change, for changes, of a, there's no particular change to be recommended.
There's no particular change to be recommended, but let me give you a brief, this, uh, of this, uh, because, right now, uh, our city code talks about, have three hard surface driveways, now, in, in that one, so, well, that, of course, can't see some purpose code, but some questions have been raised by some of the builders in town, if I can, you not have the garage, that we require two parking spaces, uh, in the block, so basically, in this, uh, there is five parking spaces on each, S F one lot, I wouldn't use that, so, but then, prior commission, the council are discussing, well, what happens if the property uses the garage for storage? So they have two or three, four cars sitting out in front of the, and, uh, because, uh, we have new builders in town, they're saying, well, you should be, okay, those two parking spaces in the garage, so that still have three lists, and, uh, and, and, as I said previous, uh, missions, and also, how many cars were actually parked out, on the drive?
We've got a lot of cars, I've got a lot of, uh, figure of direction, I think if we do a survey on this, we'll pretend there's just a number of vehicles. We've got a lot of cars, we've got a lot of, uh, figure out the direction, I think if we do this, uh, survey on this over time, this number of vehicles will explode exponentially. It's wood creek, and you have, and you land, and, and, and park around the street, that's necessarily the safety valve for most cities.
True. Yeah, and you also have to think about too, that, by, because we're a purpose code of limitations, that there might be another motive that might not require to have three hard surface driveways down the road. They need to build bigger ones.
Is this making more sense? It's a socially confusing thing here, because we're kind of between the right and the purpose, it's been a long time. I would say, not even the idea that we would even have to worry about the purpose code, we could have a garage, a deck, a house, a lawn, a hyphen, or, those are the types of. We don't have that much. We don't have that much. And we also have all considerations such as aesthetics, which is part of the development, so, in terms of when we want to sit in front of houses, I guess, you know, regulations, like not having, uh, vehicles that are concealed, won't just leave that has aesthetic issue. And while the safety is required, so, this is one of the pieces that don't need to park in the car. I'm gonna suggest this, I'm gonna table this, like, I would like to have a subcommittee of this group, review the parking, that it's a matter of some years, there, this, uh, from next meeting. In terms of maybe the recommendations for change, as well as some, some interpretations of things.
Um, yeah, I encourage you to take some clarification.
Yes, we were talking about hard surface. Uh, hard surface aren't, is that the meaning, senior?
No, it means that it's not mud, so you could actually have rock, and we have several individuals that have been building their homes that they haven't been able to stop, I always go back to the digits, where I had the bricks to dry them up for the tires, and then they had grass in between. We do have several of the rock builders now that have been putting, uh, river rock, uh, fitting in granite ground, anything that is still purpose, so that they can go ahead and meet the purpose requirements, but still get the three hard surface driveways. It doesn't say it has to be concrete, that's all, this is, it's got to be hard surface and stuff, guy. And we do even have one parking on the, their tire, it's made up of granite ground.
Okay, great, all right, um, so, I, I, again, I'd like to table this, uh, item, and I'm the chair of a two-person subcommittee after this, and I'm looking for someone uh, to join me in this task. Maybe Sunday has offered to, to be on my, so, I, well, I wanna also look into the parking in other places, the parking is a bigger issue, generally. We'll come back. Parking, pickup trucks.
My wife's husband doesn't believe the garage is.
At one point in my life, I thought about putting together a kind of artistic photo, this way, of why I should move the doors over. People survive or something, and you say, wow, that's pretty huge, as they do now. And in any, um, I don't, we don't even vote on the table.
Uh, this is directed by the chair, to tell you what, and the creator of the subcommittee, and I think he had one volunteer besides himself, so, our.
Um, Joe, can I ask a question there? Why don't we do the city parking, parking thing here, because it has, why would there be any, that's seven days of intersection of vehicles? If we're gonna look at the parking as a whole, why don't we exclude that first portion here?
Uh, because that is being considered by the city council tonight, uh, to address several pieces. And so, if they make any changes, or, uh, because there is, like, an ordinance that has an intractable consideration. And that's why.
So, that's why you're going to let it go, to be able to, to the council, say. I think, I think.
I do, section.
That's right, right.
The other, the other thing, with our laws, is that.
And the other thing too, is that, when this was, uh, actually directed from the city council, because it had to do with all parking, but the schedule for is actually under the track of code and not under the summing. And, but, they, they, they had also, uh, had spoken about having the commission look at all parking together, but since it's under the track of that, actually does not have to come back to the commission.
So, mostly we're on the city council. I think, of course, the, the, our, where the law has, the, sort of, working permission, and I was saying that seven days is very much, uh, a challenge.
Okay, um, my next agenda, is starting of duty ordinance. Okay, we got our position taken. And, uh, our particular charge on this is, uh, discuss and take appropriate action on instructions from the city, city, city council, city of council, the city of Wind Creek, to review, adjust, and, or create clear guidelines regarding plan, develop, and district. Plan and development district, mission use, and mixed use districts with a focus toward conservation, the E T J, if that hopefully is. And possible benefit for our citizenry, and present to council the recommendations. Um. Okay, is, is there a motion to this, before discussion?
You know, Joe, this is just my daughter. I would like to just take it from him, because we're about to have that, um, training webinar on land use. And the comprehensive plan is also looking at land use, and how it affects the city of Wind Creek, and, uh, there are three of us that are going to be working with Brandon from K3s. Uh, Deborah Heinz and I are, um, sitting in with him, and there's a lot of information that he has sent us to review. And a lot of it has to do with this type of planning, especially the E T Js, and, um, plan development districts, so, I really feel like, once we get that training, and once we get a chance to really work, um, kind of through some of that, we have a better idea as to what we should do with this. So, I'd like to table this.
Okay, um, I can table this, right?
You got, you're going to through the process of that.
Um, before I table this, yeah, in going over the ordinances, did discussion of things like this, again, another term that doesn't get defined, is the ordinances. For the districts, and the districts, uh, historical districts, this, this, if you want certain kind of houses. And so, I think one thing that a, uh, subcommittee can do here is kind of correct all the different places, this is what I'm about to have. See the analysis of what we would hear needs, of, especially as many real, like, that's, now, actually. And in that, we appreciate what you're saying in terms of this activity, the other portion of the community, community, city council, that, like, here. So, I will go ahead and table this, uh, item, or until our next, uh, P H two, and then, um, I'm going to ask for the schedule of the subcommittee, depending on all this, and I'm gonna ask the last and share the subcommittee. The one, as you guys, who is that, I guess, right? So, we have a subcommittee, two subcommittees reporting, I told us, for our next meeting.
Okay, who's the other member of the subcommittee?
Charlie.
Who's the other member of the, uh?
The top one is working with, um, the commission, and, and, and.
All right, please.
You just pay reviews.
Yeah, I mean, one evening.
It's a lot of, you guys, it's, it's, I think, good. And, and, uh, who would like to offer to say the subcommittee member?
Uh, you have four of them.
I'm happy.
Good. So, the committee.
Oh. So, please, I'm, I'm.
Okay, the, the commission is made up of five members, but two old.
Okay.
So, basically, five members have the right to vote, so, to, to have a meeting, you would only have to have three commissioners here. So, if you have more than two people on your subcommittee, then you are in violation of those committees.
Okay, uh, so, the recommendations have, uh, one person looking to this?
Well, we got, we have to, so we got, uh, we had Jonathan, oh, really, we got you and Sunear for the other.
Okay, is he there? I'm the one that asked for the point.
She volunteered.
Um, is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, um, is there any other business or B and C? Is there motion?
I'm doing the adjournment.
Sorry. Uh, I mean, voice acknowledgement, we are adjourned, thank you very much, and, um, we're a three oh one.